Well, good morning. The time is now 9:40 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of June 9, 2014 is called to order. This is our favorite meeting of the year, Teacher of the Year, and so glad we have our guests and our winners here. By the way, this is the last and 120th time that I have brought the meeting to order here as a State Board Chair. And it did hit me, my wife reminded me this morning, she did some math. I've been a superintendent over 25 years and I've been at over, as superintendent, at over 400 board meetings.
Wow.
So, that's why I look old. Ammo. It's both.
You're about to be released.
About to be released. Set you free, so to speak. So approval of agenda and the order of priority?
I'll move approval with me. I think we want to discuss the third grade reading work we support, I would propose during the afternoon discussion period. If that change, I move approval.
Is there support for that with the amendment?
Support.
It's moved by John, supported by Lupe. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Great. At this time, Mertz does our traditional introduction of folks here and around.
So we'll start at the head of the table. To my left, Mike Flanagan, State Superintendent. He's the chairman of the board and this is his final State Board of Education meeting because he's retiring on July 1st. And then John Austin, the president of the board. John resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is unable to join us today. She's the board's vice president. She's from Rochester Hills. The next person at the table is Michelle Fecto. She's from Detroit. She's the board secretary. Richard Zilee, he's a member of the State Board of Education. He resides in Dearborn. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Melody Erebo from Wald Lake Consolidated School District, Keith Elementary School. This is her final meeting as the Michigan Teacher of the Year. And thank you, Melody. And across the table, Karen McPhee, Senior Education Policy Advisor for the governor. Eileen Weiser is in the next chair. She's on her way, or will be in the next chair. She's from Ann Arbor. She's board member. Board member Kathleen Strauss resides in Detroit. Lupe Ramos-Montini is board member from Grand Rapids. She's the board's NASB delegate. It's the National Association of State Boards of Education. And next to me is Pamela Pugh Smith from Saginaw. She's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge a friend and he's going to be a great state superintendent, my successor, Brian Winston. Would you please be recognized? Thanks, Brian, for being here again today. I went to his kind of retirement party the other night and you can see how loved he is in the community, which is really a good sign for us. So, Brian, welcome. I did want to just, I thought, a little corny, but 120 meetings ago, I started with this song and I thought I would at least end today with it. I wanted to catch Rick singing. I saw that record. I thought I could get you. But this is an honor not only of the great teachers we have here today. My daughter's a public school teacher. Very proud of her. For her also. Want to recognize Lupe. Her own award this past week, received the LEED Award for Community Engagement from Literacy Center at West Michigan. I know what happened here. What's happening? So congratulations, Lupe. Thank you. I think consent agenda. I'll turn this over to John at this point.
Before we go to presentations, we have three resolutions to prepare for this. First, honoring Michael P. Flanagan, State Superintendent. And the second resolution honoring our 2014-15 Teacher of the Year, Melody Erebo. And a third resolution honoring the incoming 2015-2016 Michigan Teacher of the Year, Rick Joseph. Fifth and sixth grade teacher of English Language Arts and Social Studies at Birmingham Covington School. Birmingham School. I will have motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second. Second by Kathy. Approved by Richard. All in favor, signed by my son, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Me. Well, it is more than appropriate that before we honor a lot of other great educators and educational leaders, that we take a minute to honor Mike. Mike's distinguished career, leadership of education at all levels. We've been fortunate to have him as our superintendent for an unprecedented 10 years. I remember, I think many of you have known Mike longer than I have, but it was probably in the 90s, I think I first became aware of Mike when he was Wayne Reese's superintendent. And the first I learned, he was willing then to take risks, to work together with the Henry Ford, the Ford Motor Company, and to create a charter school that would be a robust learning environment to serve all of the citizens of Wayne County, black and white, city and suburb, and create the kind of innovative learning environment that is what we need to continue to create and remake in Michigan. And I first, I saw that, like, this guy is a change agent. He's willing to take some risks to try to improve education. And I certainly, over the years, encouraged him to take the risk of being our superintendent. There's nothing that is more challenging and nothing that's more rewarding than to be in this arena and to try to work on the most important thing that we can work on as a state and as a country, and that's how do you improve the lives of young people and give them the kind of educational opportunity that they deserve. And Mike's been there every day, slugging away, making change, and helping us improve education in Michigan. So, I'm very honored to present this resolution on behalf of the State Board of Education. I know all of the Michigan education community. And Mike Flanagan, I know you will not be absent from our lives. You will continue to nudge us about where we need to go, but hopefully you'll do so with a little more time, with your wonderful extended family that you've also shared with us over the years. So, thank you, Mike, for your dedicated service and for your commitment.
Thank you very much. I have a few things I want to say at the end of the day, but I don't want to, other than one little short clip, I, first of all, thanks so much, John, for that comment. We have worked hard at this. This is a great team here. I've been lucky to work with this board. I appreciate, you know, even, I had a cancer bout a while back. You guys worked through that with me. But, what I want to really do is honor the teachers today, but just before we get to that, I do want to show a quick, because it struck me, I was going to wait till the end of the day on this, but when John said his distinguished career, well, Friday, I found out that the team here had a little roast ready inside the department, so a couple hundred people, this is just one little clip to show, yeah, the distinguished career. Two separate categories. Mike's big ideas. What was he thinking? Okay, that gets it. Because I had a game show lined up that kind of played with things, including Mike's big ideas and what the heck was he thinking? So, more of that later. I really did appreciate it. This is a team, the best team I've ever worked with, and I've worked with some great ones. So that was a lot of fun. But distinguished, maybe not. Now, we're going to get to really the highlight of the day. It's our highlight every year, but we want to start, first of all, to set the tone for the day with kind of the final meeting of Melody, who's been with us for a full year, and she's going to do her report a little bit earlier, because I can't tell you how much we appreciated her thinking at this table. I thought the board was so smart to, years ago, include the Teacher of the Year at the table, and even though she and I are not voting members, I think it's great to have that voice and that perspective every day when we meet. Her passion for children and teaching has been obvious at these meetings. She's been speaking passionately around the state and around the country, and I think particularly her contribution with her book and her other efforts toward, about school bullying is really something that's making a mark. So for her final MTO report, I'd like to introduce, and please, let's give her a warm welcome. She's been an inspiration.
Thank you so much. Certainly the biggest group I've spoken in, not a State Board meeting, but I appreciate the honor. This is titled Passing the Torch. About a year ago, my life completely changed. Within moments, at a surprise assembly, I went from being a third grade teacher to being the voice for teachers across the state. I was suddenly the Michigan Teacher of the Year. I realized very quickly that this would be no easy task, but I was equally open to and terrified of taking on the challenge. To earn the honor, I had to dig deep into my beliefs and values as an educator and construct a vision for the future of the profession. But now, I actually had to put those philosophies into practice. While that day was incredible and overwhelming and emotional, it couldn't even begin to prepare me for the wonder and awe I would experience through this once-in-a-lifetime adventure. One of the two things I get asked most often in this role is, what have you been doing this year? Hmm, great question. The first thing I did was try and understand the purpose of this role and why I would ever be worthy of it. My good friend and predecessor, Gary Abboud, was a guiding light for me. He didn't even know me when this began, but still spent countless hours sharing his experience, offering advice, and helping me see the value I could bring to others. It is hard for teachers to see themselves as valuable, but I know how powerful it can be when they do. So what did I do this year? I found my purpose. It took me a while, but I broke through the stifling culture of our humble profession and learned to be confident about my strengths and comfortable with sharing them. I started blogging, tweeting, speaking at events, presenting at conferences, and engaging in policy. I didn't realize how important it is for teachers to do these things, but I now know that you don't need a title to speak your truths. So what did I do this year? I found my voice. I realized a longtime dream of becoming an author. A book I wrote nine years ago as a way to shatter bully stereotypes was now a catalyst for the work I've wanted to do on bully prevention. I used to read the story to my class on printer paper in a duotang folder, just to be able to share the message that even the smallest, sweetest, and smartest kids act like bullies sometimes. Through this role, I got to spread my message through author visits and workshops for kids, teachers, and parents. I always hoped to shift the conversation around bullying, and now I know that it is something I will do long after this role ends. So what did I do this year? I found my passion. I visited schools. I talked to students. I listened to teachers. I met incredible educators from all around the world. I connected with others and grew a network of the most genuine, passionate, dedicated, creative, and inspiring people that I've ever known. I gained knowledge and strength and motivation with each encounter, and I know now that we are all in this together. So what did I do this year? I found my team. I noticed a lack of teacher perspective in the places it's needed most. Determined to change that, I expressed the importance of teacher leadership to anyone that would listen. I rallied for more opportunities for those that are anxious to break through the walls of their classrooms and extend their reach. I shared ways to elevate this great profession and helped educators think like teacherpreneurs. I was always grateful for those that saw my potential and lit the fire within me, and I know now that I can do that for others. So what did I do this year? I ignited the flame. I held a seat at the table during State Board meetings. I testified before the House of Education Committee. I engaged in dialogue with representatives of the U.S. Department of Education and the Foreign and Domestic Policy Council. I worked with amazing teacher supporters like the CCSSO, MEA and NEA, America Achieves, Scholastic, Smart Technologies, Smithsonian, Microsoft, University of Phoenix, Voya, and MEMIC. I started conversations about what needs to change. I offered solutions that will help to change them. I always felt like teachers should have a say in decisions, but I know now, more than ever, it is our responsibility to make our voices heard. So what did I do this year? I made an impact. And oh yeah, I met the President of the United States. So there's that, too. This year was much more than an opportunity to have a title. It was a chance to push myself, try new things, take risks, and to reshape my beliefs about education and the role I want to play in it. It was a chance to see the teaching profession for what it truly can be, a gateway for change. The other question I get most often is, so what will you do next year? Hmm, great question. The only thing I know for sure is that my work has just begun. But for now, it is time to pass the torch. Rick Joseph, an extraordinary fifth and sixth grade teacher from Birmingham Covington School, is our new Michigan Teacher of the Year. He's an award-winning educator and genuinely kind man that I'm thrilled to know and excited to work with. He, too, will enjoy a once-in-a-lifetime adventure. He, too, will discover his purpose and find his voice. He, too, will make an impact and influence change. It's Rick's turn to be our voice, and it is my turn to be the guiding light so that he can shine. Congratulations, Rick. Although I may be passing the torch, I still have the power to ignite the flame, and so do all of you. I have a small token of appreciation, that I'll pass out at lunch, that will remind you of that as you guide the decisions and changes that will impact education. I am forever indebted to all of you for your kindness and support. Thank you.
Bridge Magazine asked me to write an article before I left, and I think it came out today, Marty told me, which was a nice coincidence. But basically, I was trying to make the point that the system is still broken to some degree. We've got two reforms that are crisscrossing. We've overtested. We've got federal law kind of colliding with state law. This board, I think, does a marvelous job in trying to help us navigate those waters, and so does the team here at MDE. But I chose to talk very briefly about the system and then try to emphasize that the real heroes are in our classrooms, and they're accepting a lot of this blame, not accepting it, they're the subject of it to some degree, and tried to address that. And anyone who knows, like Melody, my daughter Krista, those of you here today, those are our real heroes, and I, that's what I chose to write about, so we'll see how that goes. And it's kind of a lead-in to what happened in May 1st. You know, the most, the most fun I've had in this job, and it's not always fun, but the most fun is the day that we and board members get to surprise the Teacher of the Year. So it was May 14th this year, Birmingham Covington School, surprise announcement to Rick Joseph as the 2015-16 Teacher of the Year. As I mentioned with Brian before, you can tell when someone's really highly thought of by the spirit around them, in the same way that was clear with him. I could just see the genuine admiration for Rick. You know, sometimes you're not sure, would there be some jealousies, would there be other kinds of things? And every time we've done this with Teachers of the Year, you just don't see a hint of that in the room. And it was just wonderful to watch. The selection committee thanked them again. I think they did a tremendous job. The other finalists are just top-notch people. These are always kind of close calls, I think. He's known, Rick is known for his passion and dedication. That passion lies in something close to our hearts, as you've heard, our work here as a board, in ensuring that students develop skills that allow them to function in a global world through a social justice lens. He's got a great support system. Many of them are here today. We're excited to have Rick as the Michigan Teacher of the Year. It's been almost a decade since we've had a fifth and sixth grade teacher in this role, so this is perfect timing. And I'd like to, first of all, thank Barb and Anne Marie, who I know are behind the scenes often, but have worked this so well over the years. And I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent Linda Forward to the table to kind of work us through this process today. Welcome, Linda.
Thanks, Mike. This is indeed one of the great, fun parts of the job, and so, thanks for the opportunity. First, we want to thank Melody for her year of service. We think she's just done a fantastic job. She is putting herself in front of others and saying, teachers, you need to be leaders. You can influence what's going on, and please take a leadership role. So thanks so much, and thanks for using social media to reach out. You've made a massive impression just by reaching out to people through that venue. I am so pleased this year to tell you that this year, we had 487 teacher candidates for this position. That is not unprecedented. Years and years and years ago, we used to have that, but we are now back to that level. And so, thanks to the hard work of Barb, and Carol, who's not in the room, and Anne Marie, were there. Nineteen semifinalists and five finalists. And you'll be meeting the finalists and the Teacher of the Year today. Our interview panel consisted of a State Board member, a former Teacher of the Year, an educational organization member, and a member of the Department of Education. So, good panel to take a look at our five finalists. Right now, Mike mentioned the video, and I thought you might like to see that moment when we're able to announce the Teacher of the Year.
And those State Board of Education members, two of them are able to make it today. I'd say we'd stand up, Lupe Ramos-Montini, first of all, always who are on our attention. Speaking all the way from Grand Rapids, we're here today. Andrew Zilee, he's been amazing, intellectual, and I'm proud of him. And you like secrets?
Yeah!
Some of us in this room have kept this secret for quite a while. I'm here to tell you that there's 100,000 teachers here in Michigan. 100,000 teachers. And I want to surprise you by telling you that the Michigan 2015-16 Michigan Teacher of the Year is right here at his home.
I'll work together. When you work together, you can accomplish amazing things, amazing things. Because the sum total of all of us working together is so much greater than just us individual people, and we collaborate. And as we always, yes, we learn globally, but we serve locally, and we live that three days, best we can. Every staff member in this building, by your work and your example and your model, you inspire me, you teach me, you lead me, and I learn from you, just like I learn from all of our students, too. So keep in mind the importance of celebrating the people around you, recognizing them, just saying once in a while, "Thank you." And so, thank all of you, thanks for being here, and thank you again to everybody for this amazing opportunity.
So that was the fun moment, the big aha. But for you, now, I would like to formally introduce to the State Board of Education, Mr. Rick Joseph, a fifth and sixth grade teacher at Birmingham Covington High School, Michigan's 2015-16 Teacher of the Year. And I'm going to step aside just a minute so I can do some introductions. Accompanying Rick today is his principal from Birmingham Covington School, Mark Morosky. Stand up, please. And Rick's family, Mary Beth, his son Nick, his nephew Patrick, and also Rick Seifelt, Denise Joseph, and Christopher I. Back at everybody? So welcome, and thank you for joining us. Rick, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you, Linda. First of all, it's certainly an honor to be here today at this table with all of you here at the State Board. Thank you for having me. I want to thank Luke, Dave, Mike, and Emily Polanski, my co-finalists as Michigan Teacher of the Year. They inspire me with their level of excellence and their commitment to the students of the state of Michigan. I'm truly humbled. I want to thank Melody, and I want to thank Gary Abboud, and all the MTOs who have come before me, who will guide me this year as I serve the kids across the state of Michigan. I really look forward to the chance to build bridges and to create linkages and establish relationships between educators from Iron Mountain all the way down to Monroe, from urban, rural, and suburban districts, and to really do my absolute best to help everybody see that regardless of the policy landscape, regardless of the political realities and the challenges that we face, that we are fortunate to be educators, we're fortunate to work with kids every day, and we can transcend our challenges to do what's right and what's best for the students of the state of Michigan. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick. We are looking forward to working with you this year. We had a chance to talk a little earlier. We even have a cubicle set aside for you. So, you can put your name on it, and you can come to work part of the time.
Fantastic.
I hope you're up with that, Mr. Principal. Now, my pleasure to introduce the four finalists, and I'm going to stand up and get out of the way so that you can see them. And in alphabetical order, I have Mr. Michael Craig, who is a special education and agriculture teacher. He is from Charles Hourd-Jewell Transition Center in the Detroit Public Schools. We're particularly impressed with the work you've been doing to improve the future lives of his students. And with you today is your wife Susan and your son Andrew. Andrew didn't make it there. No. But Susan made it, so, welcome, and thank you. Next, Mrs. Emily Polanski, who teaches science at Novi South High School, Novi High School, I'm sorry, in the Novi Community Schools. And the work that was particularly outstanding to the committee is the work she's been doing to create innovative educational partnerships with St. John's, Providence Park Hospital. She's also accompanied today by the school superintendent, Steve Matthews, that in the corner, Assistant Superintendent Dr. R.J. Weber, and a Novi principal, I'm sorry, that's a Novi principal. Gave you a promotion and joy. Also, though, is her husband Brent, who is a math teacher at Novi High School. So, hi. Nicole Carter, who are the principals over there. David Stewart, Jr., teaches English and history at Cedar Springs High School and Cedar Springs Public Schools. And we wanted to recognize him for the extensive work he's been doing to support the Common Core State Standards. He is accompanied today by the Cedar Springs Superintendent Laura Van Dyne, and the Cedar Schools High School Principal Ron Brenwald, and the Director of Academic Support Services, Ann Kostas, as well as his wife Crystal and Bill Edwards. Luke Wilcox, teaches math at East Kentwood High School in the Kentwood Public Schools. We need to recognize Luke for a lot of the work that he does, especially in student motivation, and his 99% pass rate for his AP statistics students over seven years.
Wow.
Exactly. Trying to get up to tutor my grandson. He is accompanied today by East Kentwood High School Principal Jamie Gordon, and Luke's wife Jamie and children Reese, Trey, father Jim Wilcox, stepmother Kathy, mother Nancy, talk about a network. And also brought along his father, mother-in-law Paul, and Carol Botrell, and his grandmother, Evelyn. You've got to be pretty proud. It's got to be a perfect time for you. Now, I'd like to share with you just a wonderful opportunity that MEMIC has given us. And so Pam Harland. Pam represents the MEMIC Insurance Company, and they have provided over the years tremendous support for our Michigan Teacher of the Year program. But this year, they helped us make a bit of a change. Unbeknownst to them, and as we began to realize over the years, the real issue in the travel was not so much the vehicle to drive as the Teacher of the Year travels and crosses the state, but the way to pay for the gas and the airlines to here and the hotel there. And so, MEMIC has stepped forward, and they are giving us the opportunity to provide up to $10,000 worth of travel expenses for the Teacher of the Year. There's a check for $1,000. So, we're going to Rick's school fall. The finalists will also be receiving some checks. So, thank you, and thanks to the foundation for helping make this year a truly wonderful year for the Teacher of the Year. I really appreciate it. I believe now we're at the point of making a presentation for our Teacher of the Year, and I would ask Mike and the President of the Board, as well as Michelle and Pam, to join us at this end of the table. I believe, as they say, we have some presentations to make.
Rick, congratulations. We welcome you to the board table. Every Teacher of the Year, as Melody and her predecessors before, and as you will, brings us incredibly helpful insights as we wrestle with the direction for education. We are hearing from folks who are actually doing the job and making sure that our decisions reflect that insight and perspective. Everyone brings new gifts. We may want that mustache back. We haven't had it. That's your pride. I know you will be as thoughtful and passionate without it as you choose, but anyway, you're welcome to grow it. Anyway, congratulations, Rick.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spector, I believe you have a lapel pin and a card. And if you don't, while you're doing that, Pam, we'll call on you.
My one job is critical.
I am so sorry. Welcome. And we have a sculpture here that reads, "It takes a circle of love and support to mold young lives." So, welcome, and we're so happy to have you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Spector?
I now have the lapel pin.
Do you risk putting it on or giving it to?
Want me to put it on?
Sure.
The lapel pin is symbolic of the saying, get to the back. It takes a circle of love and support to mold young lives. And I look at the view, it's very appropriate.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Now, invite all of you to stay there, and then invite Mike and Martin Morosky.
Come on up here a second. By the way, this is a special privilege because in the '70s, I got to work with Mark's dad, who was a principal in farming. So, it's interesting that I'm the head of the principal, but we always want to give a permanent thing to the building itself. We have almost 4,000 school buildings in Michigan, and there's only one Teacher of the Year, so this is really quite an honor.
And now, if I could invite Kathleen and Eileen and Richard and Lupe to join us, and also invite Michael Craig, Emily Polanski, David Stewart, and Luke Wilcox to join us right along here.
Going to need a bigger boat.
Mrs. Rosson, I believe you have a presentation for Michael Craig.
What are the...
Thank you very much.
I'm so far from one Teacher of the Year. All of you, as I said, any one of you could be the Teacher of the Year. I'm especially impressed with Michael Craig at the Charles J. Doon Transition Center in Detroit Public Schools. He runs a program, he's a special education.
Yes.
And he runs a program with the wider coaching. If I could be a model, I'd like to come see.
Is it? Anytime, anytime. I'm free.
And he's doing a lot of the model across the country, I have to say. I think that's absolutely fantastic. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And this is the circle. It takes a circle of love and support to mold young lives.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Mrs. Wyzer?
Emily, I wish I knew who you were. And I'd like to say to all of you that this is a difficult moment for anybody on the State Board, because we know that we're not all of the teachers. I wish that all of you could share the responsibilities. Very worn-out Teacher of the Year, because it's a big job. But I value so much the reward. I wish that I could see the classes in front of me. So, as people have been saying, it does take a circle of love and support to mold young lives. I see the relationship, and I'd like to be with you and with you, and also to show you the certificate that you're being given for being a Teacher of the Year.
Dr. Zyley?
David Stewart.
Sir.
Congratulations. I know you're an overachiever, as is every applicant for Teacher of the Year, because they make you jump through so many hoops. But it's my privilege to present you with the card. It takes a circle of love and support to shape young lives. Makes a great bookmark for your professional journals.
Thank you.
The pin that represents the same, and the certificate from the State Board of Education. May I say, I look forward to reading your blog.
Congratulations.
Finally, Lupe Rahab.
Well, let me tell you, I was in a panel, and it was one of the most difficult decisions I could ever make. But as far as I am concerned, all of them are Teachers of the Year. So, today, I am very proud, because two of the finalists are from my side, from the west side of the state. And so, I want to say to Michael, I want to say to Dave and Emily, congratulations. And I am going to pin Luke. And I hope that in the fall, I will get to go and visit all your classrooms. That's my goal. So, first of all, I will pin...
Sir, please do.
Maybe in...
Thank you.
Okay. It takes a circle of love and support to mold young lives. I was a teacher for 36 and a half years, so I should know that. And Luke is from East Kentwood Schools, Kentwood Public Schools, and he's a state-level finalist in the Michigan Teacher of the Year program. So, here's your certificate. And where's my photographer?
I need everybody to move out of the way. Thank you.
One more thing I want to give as a chain of leadership, leadership, teamwork, and excellence. And I hope that Superintendent Flanagan doesn't mind me doing this, but we got this award from Superintendent Flanagan as board members. And I think it is very appropriate for you, Luke. It's from the state of Michigan, symbol of teamwork. And then in the back, it says, "Leadership, teamwork, and excellence." So, that's exactly what you portrayed in the interview. So, I want you to have it from one teacher to another.
Thank you, Lupe.
Thank you.
We inadvertently skipped over some honorifics for our outgoing Teacher of the Year. Melody, you're not done till you get the proclamation and the plan. I wanted to say, on behalf of the board, we do count on the Teacher of the Year to provide the kind of perspective that we make decisions that will help them be the better decisions for helping the education. And you represented all the teachers really well in the state, as well as bringing your own distinctive passions and insight that you need to you. I also want to say, I've never won your gifts, because I've never seen President Obama so happy lately. So, another gift you have. So, thank you for spending your talents with us and all the people in Michigan.
Now, if I could give you one group picture, I'd ask the board to join, come along here with the Teachers of the Year and the finalists. And David's going to try to capture all that.
David, I think you will share the educational information.
I'll educate your horsepower up here. You take out the board members. Expect social media to light up.
Aparazzi.
Yeah, one more coming. Thank you all, and thank you for taking this high honor and your dedication.
I thought you'd all be awarded the best dressed Teacher of the Year.
It was quite a changing wardrobe from, you know, being in a classroom.
Well, that's true. It is. My wife, being a teacher, being a principal, and all my...
Huge wardrobe shift.
Oh, my, our youngest son, who had been a student, he was... What happened to my mother?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it was fun. I know. I thought, what am I going to do with all these clothes when I go back to...
No more of those bulky sweaters, you know.
Yeah. I don't have to wear huge...
Show your video, Ben.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't turn you in. I didn't say who it was.
Yeah, it's not exactly the greatest shot in the world. So, Mike, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Linda, and Barb, Anne Marie, and our honorees. This is really our highest privilege every year to be with you. And you and your family are certainly welcome to stay here till nine o'clock tonight when we finish. But also, feel free, if you'd like, to depart, whatever works for you. We'll give you a few minutes to decide. Some of you I know are going to leave.
They were waiting to be escorted to my house, because I don't have it. Yeah. I will email Cook, and she will get it.
Right, got it.
I'm sorry. Let's get out of your way there. Next time, what? Okay, you got that? He does their gardening at the school.
Tense.
Okay. Do you know John George?
How you doing?
Like, he's a motorcycle blaster. He's a good guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, he knows. He told that he could just salvage all the wood out of the precinct, so he'd go this way.
No, no. I have some passports that are important.
That worked well?
And thanks for the early information that...
Well, last year, you don't remember this, but last year, we told people when they got here, and they were like, "If you'd give us a little heads up, that'd be lovely."
But it's funny how you give us a heads up.
See, but you didn't need it.
Probably.
Well, what I did is I just...
Well, a tragedy. It's Henry Ford.
Yeah, and some people are fine, just like, okay, I know, and I'm cool. And some people are like, no, I want some stuff so that I can fix one.
Girls were at cheerleader tryouts or something like that, and across eight miles, they get a... And one girl died. That girl is... And the next day, the deceased girl...
Yes, I made copies of it last night at the Senate. Yes, yes. You didn't get any responses about something to change on it or anything, did you?
No, I didn't even know people had a chance to read it.
Okay, my printed copies. I will have a chance to talk about it, hopefully.
Oh, yeah, I think I...
And then I found out yesterday that my name changed, or this was...
I think I did it myself.
Um, oh, where'd she go? I'm not sure. So, just sit in her chair, and when she comes back...
Yeah, they arrested a guy named Justin Johnson. And...
Okay, I guess we're going to add a recess.
I had a student of that age named Justin Johnson, in front of my sons.
How's your mom?
She is doing great. She went to DC for the holiday, so... Had an appointment at U of M.
Good.
Thank God. Yes, thank you for asking.
Always wonder about people's people.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Oh, no. Yep, I see her.
Does it make you...
Oh, get them or... Comes Eileen.
School, like in this...
So, it should be in my...
Are you already done?
No, no, no. I wouldn't be sorry. One of one variant of... There's an entry here for State Board of Education.
Because I tried all the people who had to change their money.
We'll reconvene in just a moment, and... Or not. Lois, you look great, as always.
Wait a minute, I'm going to run out too.
Too late, too late.
Right.
Game one, lose one.
Be joining us for lunch? Yes. Oh, good, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want tea or coffee?
No, no, tea.
Okay.
French roast.
Well, that was our most fun time of the day. If you want to clear a room...
I was a year.
You want to clear a room, just mention M.A.I.S.A., I guess. I don't know. No, these are colleagues that, you know, I really, I've said this in front of you, but I need to say this publicly, too. Compared to when I was an ISD superintendent, the leadership of ISDs today is tenfold. It's just, it's just amazing to watch. It almost honestly used to be kind of a reward position to some degree, and I think now what you have are not only a level of diversity, especially with gender, and the ISD ranks, although it doesn't show up today, but also... We are at a very critical point here in that we are actually closing programs across the state because we cannot staff these programs with qualified teachers. It's, the times have changed, the economy's changed, and people that are strong in their field, it's very difficult for them to get the current 4,000 hours of recent and relevant work experience before they can be certified. So we're asking for a waiver of that requirement, not a waiver, excuse me, a temporary suspension of that standard, so that we can entice more people into the field in a shorter period of time and fill these positions. So with me today to talk about that is Mike Hill with Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District, we have Gene Pierce from Tuscola, Jan Ampsberg from Greshett Isabella, and Assistant Superintendent John Van Wagner from Chiawasi, who helped with the technical parts, since he worked here in the department before. We have John here to sort of talk about the technical nature of this.
You say it worked loosely.
Okay, well. Had some experience with certification.
Should have acknowledged earlier, John did a great job.
And I'm going to let these gentlemen speak to the specific issues that are out there and how we came up with the solution. Just to let you know, the Department of Education Certification Office has been very cooperative with us. We got some feedback about our original proposal, I hope you have the correct proposal, we sent a modified one on May 28. Basically, we're asking that the 4,000 hours be suspended as one option temporarily in favor of 1,600 hours, 40 weeks, 40 hour weeks, 40 weeks. And we think that that will give us the kind of experience, recent experience, that we need for people to fill these positions. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having us here. And I'm Mike Hill, I'm with the Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District. Welcome from the cherry capital of the world, Mr. President, good to see you. You've been up to Benzie County, and it's good to see you. Marty, Susan, nice to see you. And Gene and I did not email each other about ties this morning, so if you're wondering what's going on, but we've been in the field about 25 years, and I want to say congratulations to Brian, and I know Rick has left, but Teacher of the Year, that's great. But Mike, thank you for being a mentor and just a great role model for all of us across the state. I mean, I'm getting long in the tooth, too, and not that you are. But I just want to thank, I just want to thank you for your mentorship and leadership through the years. And Mr. Austin, Mr. President, thank you for coming up to Benzie County. We have a challenge. We are passionate about career and technical education. This is something that is on the forefront right now, as it should be throughout the state of Michigan, and our governor is very supportive, which we endorse, of career and technical education. But we're having a really challenging time, as we have through the years, over 20 years of trying to attract our best and brightest to be career and technical education teachers. And I can give you one experience, and I could go on and on, and I'll stop, but auto body repair at the Traverse Bay Area ISD, people hit deer up in northern Michigan. And, I mean, it just happened just the other day, driving into Traverse City from our home, and we had such a difficult time trying to find an auto body repair instructor. And because of the 4,000 hours and the certification, is, we had a young man that was semi-credentialed to come up to us. He was not fully credentialed, but we could get him on an annual authorization. But he was not willing to risk coming up to the Traverse Bay Area, leaving southeast Michigan, because of the annual authorization situation that he would have to go and we would have to repost the job every year. So that is one challenge, okay? The other challenge is the 4,000 hours. You're going from 100 weeks, and we're recommending 40 weeks. And we've had great dialogue as professionals about how many hours it should be. And we believe that the 1,600 hours is the right mark. 4,000 hours is too much. It's very tough to attract our brightest and best and our youngest, whatever age, into our profession of career and technical education. So that's why we're here, to respectfully ask the board to consider that. And, and, and just to take a look at that, because we're really having a challenging time right now, let alone the critical shortage issue, but, but it's just really tough to find, I've got right now at TBA ISD, an auto tech academy instructor position open, an information tech academy instruction position open, and we've got three or four candidates. So we're just trying to attract our best and our brightest, knowing that we can coach them. We can coach them, but just to reduce and consider the hours reduction. So thank you for allowing me to be here today. Thank you, Mike. Richard, you had a.
Quick question, how are the hours accounted? I mean, how are they verified or counted, or?
Yeah, so what happens is the, the, the school district actually applies for the AOA through MDE, the Office of Professional Preparation, and those hours actually have to be verified through that before the department will issue that annual authorization to the district. It's not given directly to the person, it's actually applied for and given to the district, the ISD or the LEA that applies for that. So that process has to go through the department to verify and verification of those hours currently.
So an auto tech who worked two years at Uncle Ed's Oil, would, they, Uncle Ed would verify the.
They would have to have some type of record, you know, a lot of times pay stubs, those kind of things that they do. So, you know, like, the department has done that for a long time, and professional preparation. We're not asking any change of that kind of verification exactly the way that's done. It's just a matter of, right now, those 4,000 hours are, you know, it's recent and relevant. You know, that's one of the things that we've talked about in here, too, is some, some, a little bit of flexibility with the recency for some of it. And, you know, right now, it's, the board is a six-year component to what that recency is, and we're looking, you know, for some flexibility. We realize that, you know, the department would have a lot of, you know, say in what that might look like, what the department staff feels would be the best for that, but we're just looking for, you know, some type of flexibility for that recency. We're still want some people to have some recent hours, but, you know, if there's, say, it's some that was eight years ago, a retired engineer, for instance, from, you know, from Ford, maybe they were retired 10 years, and maybe they've had something in the last two years, you know, but it's not 4,000 hours, doesn't mean they still wouldn't be a great candidate, but under the AOA requirements right now, it would be a struggle for them to get an AOA.
Okay.
Yeah, and Gene.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eileen, did you have something?
Well, actually, if they're not, if they want to continue with their presentation.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, I might answer some of your questions. Gene Pierce from Tuscola, he has a prepared statement he'll leave with you, but he wanted to talk about his experience. He's, he's again, one of the leaders in that part of the state, and I think has a great insight into how difficult this is right now.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan, and members of the State School Board for allowing us to present today on a topic that's impacting the ability to deliver career and technical education programs throughout the state. At a time when Governor Snyder has set a goal of being the leader in career and technical education, the current Michigan teacher certification requirements for career and technical education are greatly impeding our ability to find and retain teachers in career and technical education. It's becoming more and more difficult to attract CTE teachers from business and industry. In most cases, schools cannot meet the salaries that private industry pays. The extensive requirements to become a CTE instructor are prohibitive. Most of the universities that provided career and technical education teachers in the past no longer offer this option or have greatly reduced the course offerings. The main players in this arena were Ferris State University, Western Michigan University, Central Michigan University, and Eastern Michigan University. Most of these programs have virtually been eliminated and are no longer offering the CTE options that we used to have. Currently, career and technical education teachers must have 4,000 hours or more of recent and relevant work experience to even be considered for a teaching position. If the candidate meets the guidelines, then they must be willing to attend a four-year university for an education degree, for which they have eight years to complete the degree. This degree must be completed while the individual is working full-time, learning a new profession, and trying to raise a family. The Tuscola Technology Center, a story similar to Mike's, recently posted an automotive teaching position. Our teacher retired after 29 years. This is a quality program, one of the first in the state to meet the National Automotive Technician Education Foundation certification requirements. We've been nationally recognized by the Automotive Industry Planning Council as one of their top award winners. We are recognized by Chrysler Corporation for outstanding contributions to automotive engineering, and we're consistently turning out students with industry-based certifications and licensure. The enrollment's great. Despite advertising throughout the state and in numerous outlets, including many universities, we did not receive one single qualified applicant, not one. This is a position that starts in the mid to upper 40s and goes to over $80,000 a year, working 186 days with quality full benefits. This is a lucrative position, yet we obtained zero qualified applicants. This is not unusual. In a neighboring ISD, they recently experienced the same situation in an automotive arena. Colleagues throughout the state report similar issues. In many cases, schools are forced to accept marginally qualified candidates in an effort to keep the CTE program available for students. In many cases, the CTE programs are closing, not due to lack of student interest, not due to industry saying, we don't need any more qualified candidates, and not due to school board administrators or school boards that are saying, we no longer want the program. We can't find applicants for the positions with the current qualifications. In my 20-plus years at just Tuscola ISD, I've never hired a teacher on step one. I always have to go to at least step four or five to even attract anybody to come in. Today, we as representatives of the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators are requesting your support to modify the regulations governing CTE teacher qualifications. We need to reach a balance between qualified candidates, reasonable expectations to new teachers, to a new profession, and attracting those with technical knowledge valued by the business and industry. Our request is, and recommendation is to reduce the recent and relevant expectations from 4,000 to 1,600. 1,600 would provide access to a larger pool of candidates, more in line with the wages and expectations that we can follow through to secure positions within our districts. I'm passionate about career and technical education, and the incredible opportunities that it gives to kids, I see it firsthand. Next year, the Tuscola Technology Center, in a rural setting, we're going to have over 750 kids at our career center. These are kids that come there by choice, they're going to earn college credits, they're going to earn an industry-based certification, and they're going to be well-prepared for business and industry. We need your help as a school board to help us allow for a larger pool of applicants. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Do you want to add Jan, anything from your experience, please?
Sure, I appreciate that, Bill, thank you. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak, and also congratulate Superintendent Flanagan on wonderful career and association with you, Mike, appreciate that.
Thanks, Jan, thanks.
We're a relative newcomer at Greshett Isabella RESD to the, to the CTE millage. There's always been a program in place in both Elma and in Mount Pleasant, but the enrollment, quite frankly, has been, was dropping dramatically. Schools could not afford to send the students without a millage. And together, along with our local Chamber of Commerce and local business community, in 2013, I'm happy to say that we passed one mill, which brings in about 2.6 million a year into the Greshett Isabella areas. And what's come out of that has been an incredible interest and support for CTE in our area, and it's being driven by basically our industry folks. They can't find the workers they need. And for whatever reason, CTE has kind of lost luster with, with the general public. Our students aren't going there like they used to for whatever appearances or reasons, and so we need to change that mindset. And as we move along this last year, we've increased by over 100 students, our CTE enrollment. We have around 900 students now enrolled across our two, two centers. Right now, we're okay staff-wise. We lucked out on one, our mechatronics instructor who we basically stole from a hospital, he was looking for a career change, but he had the certification requirements, so he's doing a great job there. But like, like Gene said, we're going to be adding public safety course and also another Health Act. We're worried we're not going to be able to get the instructors. And the interest is there, our business is united with us, our industry is, we've got the momentum, all those things that are usually so hard to get, we're all aligned, we're moving down the highway together. We're just worried about making sure we've got the instructors that can, that can teach the courses for us.
I think it's important that we talk about evaluation here a little bit. Because we, as a committee, have had real good dialogue and discussion and debate, not only about the hours. And we had a statewide task force on CTE this year that discussed this, and we talked about is, 1,600 hours wasn't even on the chart, it was down to 400, 500, I mean, we're in a desperate situation here. And we ended up at 1,600, and Gene was so influential 10 days ago when we had a discussion. And you just sort of wake up and smell the coffee a little bit, and you go, okay, you're right, we want our best and our brightest, and we do not want to dilute this. Okay? And we want to make sure that our best and our brightest are in front of our young people. And we will ensure that. But we talked about evaluation, because the annual authorization right now, every year, if we have someone that comes in that's non-certified, they can go on a seven-year track. Over 25 years, how many times have we had it? Many times. You know, they go on, and if, as long as they're progressing toward their certification, then they're annually authorized, but it pops up every year, you have to post it. And if someone comes in that is certified and qualified above and beyond your three-year teacher that's been there for three years and has built those relationships with those, those young men and women, they could, by all intensive purposes, be bumped right in. And so we're trying to look at that, and we, we're trying to say, you know, we have confidence in people evaluating our educators, that if they're effective or highly effective, then that should be go, you move on to the next year. That is our hope, that you would consider.
Again, we're not looking at this as, for all cases, you can still use the authorization, the traditional that's there, this would be an option for districts to use if they chose to do that. We've added a annual professional development component, which is not in the current annual authorization for quality, as well as, what Mike said, some stability, so when we hire people under annual authorization, they have some security that they're going to be able to remain in their position, and not just year to year if they're effective or highly effective. The other thing is, we care very much about student safety, and we believe that the proposal here will adequately prepare the instructors so that students will be safe in their environments, and we can have, will have more candidates. We're not sure we're going to get more candidates, even if you were to approve this, part of it is, we're trying to gear up for next fall. And I realize your process is hear from us today, make a decision another month, but You have to post it. And if someone comes in that is certified and qualified, above and beyond your three-year teacher that's been there for three years and has built those relationships with those young men and women, they could, by all intensive purposes, be bumped right in. And so, we're trying to look at that. And we're trying to say, you know, we have confidence in the people evaluating our educators that if they're effective or highly effective, then that should be go. You move on to the next year. That is our hope that you would consider.
Again, we're not looking at this as for all cases. You can still use the authorization, the traditional that's there. This would be an option for districts to use if they chose to do that. We've added a annual professional development component, which is not in the current annual authorization for quality, as well as what Mike said, some stability. So, when we hire people under annual authorization, they have some security that they're going to be able to remain in their position and not just year to year if they're effective or highly effective. The other thing is we care very much about student safety, and we believe that the proposal here will adequately prepare the instructors so that students will be safe in their environments, and we can have more candidates. We're not sure we're going to get more candidates, even if you were to approve this. Part of it is we're trying to gear up for next fall. And I realize your process is hear from us today, make a decision another month. But, you know, to us, it's pretty urgent if this, we're temporarily suspended. We are working with the department to revise the entire credentialing for CTE teachers because that's really way, that's long overdue. So, we will do that, but that's a lengthy process. And in the meantime, we're just looking for a temporary solution. And so, you know, with that, we'd very much like to entertain your questions or items for clarification.
Okay. Lena, I know you had your hand up, and then John.
So, there might be paperwork on this, but since I've forgotten my password that we had to reset about a month ago and can't get into anything, I wouldn't know it. But I do have a number of thoughts on this. I've been watching career tech ads since No Child Left Behind was passed and recognize that in this state, when we were trying to do highly qualified, we didn't have a lot of CTE teachers who were teacher certified. At least, that was my understanding. And we didn't ramp up, as did other western states, our career tech ads funding for support for ISD centers. You know, it was something that we didn't have the money for at the time. So, I've always, I've been waiting for this moment, thinking, "When is it really going to start being a problem?" And of course, it's because you're now competing in a growing economy for people who can find jobs elsewhere. So, what we did receive a letter asking us not to do this from several teacher preparation institutions. And I value that concern because that was our problem with highly qualified. We had teachers who were doing career tech ed and didn't know how to work algebra into courses that could accommodate it because they didn't have the training in a math program to be able to teach like that. I think that's different now from what I'm hearing about a number of CTE programs. I'm concerned about the systems that we have in place for teacher prep, but I'm also a huge advocate of alternative methods of training teachers. So, to me, this is a problem of our usual preparation route and career tech ed knowledge and competency, either going up here into the pre-service training area or the career tech ed knowledge and competency with mentoring, post-employment training, possibly certification, whatever it is that's going to work for you folks in a different route that's district-based. So, the question that I would raise is, how strong is the mentoring going to be? And what kind of training are you going to be advocating for that's different from? Do we have paperwork on this? Am I the only one who hasn't seen it, or is it evolving? It's still evolving within the department? How you're going to consider it?
How we're going to consider this temporary request?
Yes. Is there?
You know, the first step was...
Their presentation?
Presentation. And as Bill said, you know, typically what you do is you decide at a second meeting.
A lot of those decisions have to be made by the department and the certification office.
I know that.
But we're working really closely with them, people in the field. So, we think we can merge, a lot of the CTE programs have really merged the curriculum...
And I'm aware of that, too. I had a wonderful conversation with a...
The crosswalks are pretty amazing, if you look at all the...
I know that because two years ago, I had a fascinating conversation with an English specialist who was a floater and a Cadillac, who told me he was helping a CTE program teach Algebra I and Algebra II. At that point, you simply say, "This is what's supposed to happen." So, my concern would be that if you are looking at internationally benchmark competencies in your CTE programs or other external measures, including something I don't support but may happen, which is the CTE certification for high school kids. We don't have one for the arts. I always worry as a pianist that we're going in one direction and not a lot of the others. But if, to me, if your program is going to be, is going to have internationally benchmark certification, if you're outcome-based, if you can show that kids are being successful, then it should be that you should be allowed, I think, to mentor them on the teaching app. And I would advocate for that.
Can I talk about this a little bit? I want to...
Oh, because I have to talk for at least nine minutes.
No, I know. I want to be respectful. I would love to have a conversation with you about what we're doing in career and technical education in terms of integrating academics. It's phenomenal.
Well, I've heard it.
It's phenomenal what's going on.
I would love to have a presentation.
And one would just have to ask the governor of this state of Michigan and ask him about a young man from Manslona, Michigan, who talked to him about welding and the algebra that he's learning in welding and the fish that he gave him, the brown trout that he made himself. I mean, it's a beautiful thing. We're integrating academics, but what we're doing, ma'am, is we are hiring certified core content teachers to team teach with our career and tech ed teachers. And that was based on the Michigan American Curriculum. And many career tech centers across the state were ahead of that 10, 12 years ago and got above that and said, "Okay, let's get ready." And now, we have math, language arts, science, certified teachers team teaching with our welding instructors, team teaching with our auto body, our construction trades. And they're getting, at our TBA ISD, Traverse Bay Area Intermediate, we have 668 kids getting not just three elective credits, the way it was back when, when I was a kid. It was for someone else's, "Go there." They're getting math, language arts, science credit, based on standards, based on viable curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And it's a great thing.
So, this is the missing piece that the board hasn't been hearing. And I was at the House Education Committee hearing earlier on the STEM certification, which I don't support because there isn't one for the arts. But what I, but just because I'm worried that things will be polarized. But I talked afterwards to a couple of outstate representatives who don't have this sort of thing going on in their district. And I would urge you to talk about this, to come to Lansing for a day. And unfortunately, House and Senate Ed Committees meet on different days. But to be able to present this and show the bronze fish, pry that out of the governor's office hands.
It's a brown trout. It's beautiful.
Brown trout, okay. But this is exciting, and this is what we hope for. So, to not hear about it is a problem.
I'd like to add to that. One of the things that we look at beyond the academics that are embedded into our programs is what happens with our kids at the end of the road.
Right.
We took 16 kids to Delta College to become certified by the American Welding Society. That's not an educational standard. That's an industry-based standard.
American Wood Society?
The American Welding Society. 16 of our kids came home certified welders. In all of our programs, every one of our 23 programs, we have industry-based certifications that are available to the kids for which we pay for those certifications. They're meeting the demands of the industry, not things that we set up, things that industry sets as important. Right now, our culinary arts program, almost every one of our students is certified serve-safe so they can walk into any restaurant and work. We have seven kids that just received the allergen serve-safe certification. So, we're not only meeting educational standards, we're meeting what industry says they need. So, it's very important with the industry-based qualifications that we're providing to our kids.
So, the only other question that I had was whether or not there's an issue with salaries, whether you're struggling to meet in a rising employment situation as you try to get qualified pertinent current people who can teach what kids need today, whether you're struggling in that area, too? Nobody's answering me?
I would say yes.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Yep.
You know, we've been around a long time. I mean, this is no secret. Your question is a valid one. It's a great one, and it's a challenging one. And the answer is yes. But I think what we look at and what we try to go into is passion, you know? Passion.
You know, the interesting, like you say, is the employment becomes easier to secure. If you've got 4,000 hours of employment and you're going to go to a job that gives you an annual guarantee of a one-year job, you're probably already making considerably more money than you're going to get paid when you move over to the education side. It's, you know, it's very problematic. I think it's just going to get more so. And these are all the real high-demand jobs. Engineering, auto tech, welding is a huge shortage area.
Electronics.
Electronics.
Robotics.
Healthcare, robotics. And, you know, these aren't your old woodshop things. I mean, these are all state-of-the-art programs coming out with certifications. So, just nothing wrong with woodshop. I love the arts, too. But these are, but these are really exciting times when we are meeting industry standards and really meeting what I think Michigan needs for the economy to move forward. It's really important that these students start early. They don't have to wait till they're in community college. We can complete college credit, certifications, degrees, all within the high school environment. And there's so much of, we can do a lot more with every student, but these children now are young adults because they come out with a certificate and say, "Hey, I can go out and make industry wages right out of high school."
And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to miss the opportunity to just say that these are folks who, back nine years ago, when we were all to some degree worried about how we would integrate academics, given the MMC into career tech and not blow it up, they've stepped up. I mean, it's taken a few years. We've had to have some modifications here and there. But in general, this is how a lot of kids are learning Algebra in a construction trades course or in, that's how Mike learned Algebra this last year. I mean, he just picked it up for the...
We've got kids, Mike, learning Algebra II. They don't even know they're learning it, and they love it. They're like, "Yes."
Right.
"This is so cool."
Many of us, I'll say myself, I think, I'm not sure in Algebra II, that I learned all the concepts of Algebra II in a traditional Algebra II course. I know I didn't. I think John was next, and then Melody, and then Michelle, and Kathy.
Thank you all for bringing this topic and thoughtfully trying to put some recommendations on what we need to do. This is a really important topic. We've got a long way to go to provide the kind of robust and effective career technical offerings that do integrate academics everywhere in the state that we both needed and kids deserve it. As you know, it's funded differently. It's organized differently. So, we've got a long way to go to build the kind of career technical effort that we need, and we don't want anything to handicap that, including qualifications. We did hear from some CTE educators with concerns. I know some of them, or at least there's some folks who want to speak during public presentations, share their concerns about your proposal, and I think you want to respect that and listen to their concerns. And this may be one where we would ask Mike and his team, and then Brian, who will come on to help us wrestle with the recommendation that we might want to make in August and sort of pass with a time, but in terms of what the, what the recommendation for our action should be on this topic after we hear from everybody. So, that would be my encouragement. Thank you.
Melody, then Michelle, and then Kat.
I would just love to mention that the Illinois Teacher of the Year is an auto teacher, and his name is Steve Elza. And he was expressing the difficulty in finding somebody to be able to take over for his class while he was doing release time. So, I know that this is a problem, not just in Michigan, but I think him being in this role is a testament to, you know, the benefits that it can bring to kids and the importance of having these type of programs. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Michelle?
Great to meet you and to learn more about the CTE programs. I had, I just, I had a couple of questions and then for clarification and then a statement. So, depending what the answers are. So, the 1,600 hours and the 4,000 hours, that's just hours worked, is it right?
Yes, right.
So, about 4,000 hours is about two years of full-time work?
Hundred weeks.
Okay, 100?
What I could...
100 weeks. So, 280 is how many? 40 hours a week, right? So, the, so that's one year. So, you wanted to go from two years of full-time work to less than one year of full-time work? Is that correct?
Right. Forty weeks, yeah.
Okay. Forty, so they only have to do the job for 40 weeks?
Full-time.
Full-time? So, okay.
Forty weeks, 40 hours a week.
And then they can teach? Okay. Just, because I was kind of like...
With coaching.
I was thinking...
And also realize that some of these positions require other certifications, too. Many of them do.
And that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, it's not just anybody can step into auto, auto tech. You also have to be licensed and et cetera, et cetera.
Licensed and all that kind of stuff. So, they've had to go through probably an apprenticeship program?
And it has it in the waiver that if they have, if the industry certification is applicable, they'd be required to have that.
That certification, like to be not apprentice, but a journeyman, or that still applies?
Could be.
Yeah. May I ask how stringent you are? Because in the building trades, I actually looked at this at one point. And you can't, for example, I think in plumbing, you, journeyman is...
It's like a five-year journeyman.
Right. So, it wouldn't be necessarily that, but it would be at what level? What are you finding are your market conditions for your hires? People you wish you had, people you wish you could hire who had the savvy and the energy and the enthusiasm for their field? Are you finding that that's a very young person who's 23, 24, and has a, you know, what's the level below journeyman? Apprentice?
Apprentice level?
Or are you seeing people who are journeymen who want to trade, want to change trades?
That's part of the problem. By the time they hit journeyman wages, we're out of the market.
Okay.
Unless they have a passion for teaching, we're kind of out of the market.
Unless they're disabled. There's a lot of disabled tradespeople out there that probably would be interested, but because it's so hard.
Great question.
Yeah. So, in, so, but I'm just, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand, and I'm not trying to criticize. So, right now, they're, they also have to have a teaching certificate as well? Okay.
Well, that's where we get them on an annual authorization. They may not have the teaching certificate.
But you can get a waiver and have them...
Correct. And they have up to seven years to get on a track, but every year, that job has to be posted.
Well, maybe, see, and I'm thinking, you know, I work in higher ed, and we've looked at this issue about contract renewals and retention of faculty. And there, in Texas, they, and I...
Hi, friends. My name is...
Sorry about that. That's okay, Melody. But they use a program for tenure, which I think might apply. So, you hire somebody, you give them a provisional eight-year. And then you give them, if they don't make progress, then you non-renew them, but you give them like six months' notice that they're going to be non-renewed. So, you can terminate, so you, they're hired under this longer-term contract, but there's a provision that if they don't make progress, then with proper notice, they, they can, you know, they're not going to be renewed. So, you give them sort of a warning.
That's based in here with both the requirement for professional development or coursework during that year when they're on an annual authorization, plus they have to be evaluated as effective or highly effective to stay in there.
That's everybody.
And to give you the idea, the, under the AOA right now, they need 4,000 hours. Once they have that, there's no more requirement for any training the next year, the next year, the next year. None, the way it sits right now.
Right.
So, that's one of the things that was, we looked at, we tried to say, "How can we make it even stronger to where they're getting recent industry training, you know, from year to year that's not happening now?" And another thing with it as well is under the 4,000 right now, it has to be paid work experience. It couldn't be apprenticeship that's non-paid. It's one of the things we're asking for in here, that it could be an unpaid apprenticeship or, you know, some type of work that they could do to count.
So, and I definitely understand the need to widen the pool. And so, I'm just trying to think if there's any other solutions that might address your concerns without lowering the requirements for teaching. So, the, so, all right, so they, you said that right now, with the new proposal, they would have to have continuing education, which they don't have under the current...
AOF.
So, but don't they have to do CEUs or something to keep their teaching license?
Absolutely.
So, they do have to have...
As a certificate, but this is not a certificate. It's an annual authorization. So, technically, to have that, no. And I should say...
Okay. But they would get it under the teaching certificate?
Correct.
Like all teachers do. Okay. So, right, so I'm just...
Yeah, some of it, as we're talking about, two classes of people.
Right, certification.
Ones that currently hold a teaching certificate, want to teach in career and technical education.
Right.
That's the second A, then those that have no teaching certificate, but will have to get that over an eight-year period under an annual authorization. So, that's, there's two different groups, and we're treating them a bit differently just in terms of requiring more of the people without a current...
And just, I should say, for a lot of your well-thought-out points, that's much of what the permanent committee is trying to resolve, these same issues. It's just that before they're able to work that through the board, there was this request for a temporary...
And this may be a one-year thing. It may be, you know, we just, we know that we have immediate needs. There are programs that are going to close this fall.
And just also, just barely mentioned, but the lack of a critical shortage list is really hurting us. It's like a double whammy. That's why we're coming to you now, because we can't bring back retired teachers.
Wow, so if you were allowed to bring back retired teachers?
Well, it could really help.
It would help.
It would help a lot, but it wouldn't solve the problem either. I'm just saying, it's taken a problem that we had and just made it all that more urgent because there are people that we could entice sometimes to come back, at least, you know, you know, on a temporary basis, that no longer can do that.
And that legislation's stuck in committee, and quite frankly, we don't expect it to be ready definitely by the fall at this point.
That's good to know. Well, that, this is the, the one concern I wanted to, thank you for answering all the questions.
Thank you.
It helps me understand the problem more clearly. I know that the CTE guidelines have changed around working with kids with disabilities recently. I think in February, there was an issuance of a change to be able to provide modifications, and also that, so for instance, kids with autism could go into a program and not necessarily receive the certification, because there was some misunderstanding around the CTE regulations of special education. So I don't, so my concern is if I'm going to have a person teaching, I mean, it's one thing, and this is in any subject area, it's one thing to know the content, it's another thing to be able to teach kids that are so diverse and have such a wide range of needs, including children with autism. And so I'm wondering how, given that there was this change, and it's going to be more inclusive, and these different rules, I mean, I want to make sure that if my child is in this classroom, that they're with a teacher that will understand their disability and be able to work with them, and it's not an easy thing to do. So I'm a little bit, a part of me thinks, okay, I understand that, you know, we need this, but there's also some things about teaching that are not just knowing the content and that are equally as important. So how would you address that?
I, I would love to address that, if I may.
Would you, you're on.
I mean, you're, what a great point. Our daughter graduated last Sunday, walked across the stage, and two of the students in her graduating class got not diplomas, but certificates, and they're going back to the Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District. And one side of the coin says this, we have a regional millage at the Traverse Bay Area ISD. We have three special education teacher consultants who work side by side with our, our teachers to work with those students with disabilities. But the sadness, the disappointing fact is, that's not the case in every-
Right, and that's-
-region in the state of Michigan. We have twenty-five regions in our state without career tech millage right now. And so we've got pockets that we have to address. So depending on where, I don't know, ma'am, where you live.
Wayne.
Okay, so I don't, you know, we have three, three certified special education teacher consultants who work side by side with our, our students with disabilities, and we're blessed to have that, but that's not the case everywhere.
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's-
It's a huge equity issue.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do with-
I mean, we have our own internal committee, and I appreciate President Austin's comments. We're trying desperately to deal with the equity issue, particularly in CTE, but also special education. They're both problematic in the way that we fund that and, and the opportunities that students get across the state. Some have very few opportunities in career technical education, some are not in the community college region. There's places that are just, really, we're struggling to find ways to provide better regional services.
We're from upper Michigan, and we don't have a lot up there, do we, Susan? In terms of career tech ed, I mean, we've got gaps.
We have, we have, Susan, absolutely not.
I just want to say hello to her.
Yeah, hello, hello. Like, I'm from Brooklyn, that doesn't matter. I do want to say, by the way, it's, we're very lucky to have Karen, as you know, in the office with the governor, understanding some of these equity issues that Bill brought up, because if he really, I know it's sincere in his part, but you want to get to this kind of universal career tech, we've got to have the equity issue addressed. When I left as a superintendent in Farmington and became the Wayne Risa, a little bit reflecting on me, I guess, that I didn't do my homework, I had no idea we didn't have voc-ed millage and, at those times, voc-ed millage and centers. I mean, so to your point, those aren't available to the degree they are in Traverse Bay, right where you live.
Right.
It's just the-
And most of the, most career and technical education programs are provided in local schools, local school districts. So they do do their best to provide what they can, but they're nowhere equipped, like some of these centers are, with all of the academic support personnel, special education support. I mean, you can get the whole package there with transportation and all the rest, and it really provides, for these really robust programs that they're talking about that are, you know, state-of-the-art.
Thank you, Bill. And Kathleen?
Well, thank you. I'm so glad you are here and bringing these issues to our attention. A few years ago, we, our Teacher of the Year was a career tech teacher, and we talked more about career tech when he was here. And since he left the scene here, we haven't really had much attention paid to him. So I think you're opening a, a subject that we really need to learn a lot more about, as you pointed out. So I, I was glad to hear that you have, and we've been saying right along that you could learn the academics through career tech, but it wasn't being done in many places. But what you're saying is you, you actually have certified teachers teaching the core subjects in career tech, which sounds like a really sensible thing to do. What you're saying is, I didn't know that we were working, that the department was working with you on long-term revision of the career tech guidelines and requirements. That's good to know, and we ought to get a presentation, I think, on that on a full-scale basis. But what you're asking is a temporary fix. And to me, that sounds like a good idea. There might be other problems that I don't, not aware of, as Michelle raised good questions. But I think it's, it's very good that you're bringing this to our attention, because we should do both. We should help you with your short-term problem.
Thank you.
And we should be looking at the long-term, and we should be involved in this discussion.
Thank you.
Sooner rather than later. Mr. Wiston.
President Emeritus, that's-
Please. No, because it would be good to us, no, but we might have some good ideas to contribute before the thing is presented to us as a, like a fading topic.
Our kids deserve it.
It's really good that you brought this to our attention.
In order, in order to make sure our team gets the credit they deserve, I can't not speak to this, which our team here in the department is the key to this working group that's been going on, that would present those findings and those recommendations. That's been going on now for how many? Help me, someone, Kath, Patty?
Patty's been right there. I mean, she's right there with us. Yeah.
Yeah, so this was on its way, Kathleen, to your, to, to this table at that point, but it needed to get finality from the working group, which includes Bill and our team and everyone else. The issue that came up in the meantime was this, this temporary nature because of the crisis in the fall. And then there are two sides to this, as you'll hear later, as John said, you know, you're going to hear some other perspectives under public participation. But we would like to follow what John laid out, which is kind of give thought to this, have our team give thought to it. It's ultimately a board call, bring you pros and cons and some recommendations along those lines. And I, I would love to do that at the August meeting, but I won't be here, so.
Hey, you can come back.
No, cer- seriously, this would have been on Brian's watch anyway, because of the way the committee was kind of marching along to do its due diligence. So I think for now, are we-
We, we, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your service to the kids in the state. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike, for-
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the work we've done together and all the good work.
You've been great, Bill.
Appreciate it.
We're tired, it's starting to sound like a-
And, you know, I know the board knows, darkening the dotted lines, but it's, it's kind of an unsexy thing, but it's gotten so much work done, I'm going to speak about it at their conference next week, but they have, we don't have the ammunition that some departments of ed have. We use what are a pretty great network of ISDs to get work done. I mean, TRIC being recently getting online task on and things like that. The, the brain power behind so much of it's right here, but getting a lot of this stuff done in four thousand schools is, is very much an ISD issue. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to jump right to, Kyle's going to join us at the table with Marla and Diane.
Nope, you speak.
I'm down to an hour.
And Mike, could you two stand there for a second? This is a great picture.
For what?
No, just you and Kathleen.
And Kyle.
Yeah.
Somebody take a picture.
Head up again, Mike, head up again, wait, wait.
MDE, diversity on display.
We never, we never think of height quite that way.
No, unless you're really sure.
Unless you're really sure. Kathleen?
Well, you bump your head a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on.
In Croatian?
Okay. So, here's the deal. I mean, talk about not especially sexy, this is a part of our work, not Kyle, I mean, in general.
Got a man crush going?
This is a part of our work that, in a way, I don't want to start without the rest of the board here. I, I think it's just undervalued a little bit with, if I, there are only going to be one more minute, I'd like to do that. I think they need to-
I see they replaced Bruce Jenner's picture on the Wheaties box with yours.
Oh, yeah.
That was a while ago. That was before all this.
This is Mike.
I just, you know, I want to, I want to honor this part of the program here.
I don't ignore that one. Popular to come in. I'm just holding contempt.
Can we put a speaker in? Not a speaker speaker, I mean, a-
My kid.
Okay. Eileen's back, Kathleen can hear us from the other room, I think. But I did want to make sure the board was here because the part I was trying to, here's what I wanted to introduce and say it this way. We get involved in so many other things, but think about this, this is not the most sexy thing we do in the department, but there's nothing that I think we would care more about than making sure our kids are not hungry. And we have kids that go to school every day hungry, and then we wonder why some student achievement issues are where they are. So I really value what they're ready to present today, because particularly with the summer program, these kids are then left just off in nowhere land. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, Marla, and Diane.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to talk about some of the great work we've been doing over the last few years on the school breakfast show specifically, as well as give you a little bit of an update and highlight of, of our plans for our summer feeding efforts this coming summer now that school's out. School breakfast supports health and academic achievement for all students with market benefits for children in high poverty. According to national data that's growing by the day, children who eat breakfast, especially in school, perform better in math and miss fewer days in school. Under, under Mike's leadership, he's issued two breakfast challenges, school breakfast challenges during his tenure. This vision and understanding of the role of good nutrition plays in academic achievement has moved Michigan from forty-first in the nation in two thousand eight to fourteenth in two thousand fourteen nationally for students that eat school lunch and also eat school breakfast.
Can you send that to Nate? So they can include that in some of their-
We'll tweet it out later. And that's according to the, the Food Research and Action Center, which is FRAC, who's the leading national group that monitors this type of work, and we have a great relationship with. We've had such great success with this, along with our partners, that many states have modeled similar challenges after our successes and our lessons learned.
Now, in two thousand eight, the first school breakfast challenge asked schools to improve their participation in the school breakfast program, and they achieved a thirty percent increase statewide, equating to over sixty-eight thousand more students eating breakfast at school every day. And again, we received national recognition for the instructional time memo, which allowed schools to count breakfast time as instruction time. The second school breakfast challenge will end in July of this year, and as you can see by the chart, school breakfast participation continues to increase. Through such methods as breakfast in the classroom, or grab-and-go breakfast in the hallway during class change, Michigan remains a leader in maximizing opportunities to employ best practices supporting children to eat breakfast at school.
We are proud to say that we were able to secure a place on the dashboard for the, the school breakfast metric, so that school districts can track their progress related to school breakfast participation even after the second school breakfast challenge comes to an end. Districts can monitor their own progress toward improving participation, as well as comparing their progress to the statewide average. A school breakfast challenge recognition program is also being planned for this fall School Nutrition Association of Michigan Conference, which will happen in November. The program will recognize those who made significant progress, those who met the challenge, and those with stellar efforts. A short thank you video from Superintendent Flanagan will be recorded prior to his retirement and will be shown during the program, along with video clips of school breakfast service that's happening at schools throughout the state.
In addition to the work of our staff, I'd like to give a shout out to some of our school nutrition staff who I know are in the, are in the room, who take this very seriously and, and are passionate about making sure kids are fed. We, we couldn't do our work and have the reach that we've had without some important partners, specifically United Dairy Industry of Michigan, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan, who are both, we both have representatives here today, who have been major players in our role of child nutrition in our state, and legitimately have, have given hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last three years to help support the challenge, to help provide support both for the school breakfast challenge, as well as some of the challenges that schools face, especially with serving breakfast in the classroom, is some of the equipment, whether grab-and-go bags or cooler carts to, to get food around to different classrooms. Their grants have helped support our, our work, so again, without that support, we wouldn't be able to, to have some of the improvements that we've had. And then, right on cue, I'd like to turn it over real quickly to Sharon Toke from UIM to, to just share a little bit of, of their work with us. And she's got a special surprise for-
Mike.
-our state superintendent.
Glad I came back, Karen.
She's not here, so I'll take hers. I'm just kidding. She said she's not here, so I'll take hers. I don't mean to disrupt things, sorry. But on behalf of Michigan's dairy farm families, Ann Geyer is my counterpart at UIM, she and I would like to propose a chocolate milk toast to Superintendent Flanagan. Thank you for all that you have done for the children of our state. It has been the pleasure of United Dairy Industry of Michigan to partner with MDE over the years to implement many school health and wellness programs for our children. It's because of your leadership issuing the Michigan School Breakfast Challenge that thousands of children every day start their day ready to learn. But it's not only kids in our state, it's benefited kids across the country. My counterparts at dairy council units have replicated the Michigan challenge, and they have worked with their state superintendents and their governors to issue statewide challenges. My counterparts actually call it the Michigan model for breakfast. But you have changed the paradigm for school breakfast, when you suggested several years ago to school leaders that a healthy breakfast was needed by students every day, not just on test day. So with a big heartfelt thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's just a, it means more, please, to remind you to drink that chocolate milk every day.
You know, these are always, a number of these things happen during this, like exit time, I guess, and it's embarrassing, because, you know, as you heard this morning, I'll come up with ideas once in a while, most of them not very good, as you would have known if you'd been here Friday. There he goes again. But then, I'm telling you, this is just what happens, this is why I'm so proud of the folks in this department. They figure these things out. They either say, no, bad idea, and then I walk away, or, good idea, let's work on it. So I mean, this is just another example where they pull this off, and then you end up getting undue credit. So, thank you, guys.
I just have one thing I need to say now. I remember when we were sitting here trying to figure out how to crack the code on school breakfast, and I'm sure another, other of the board members do also, that we couldn't figure out how to get staffing for it. You, you were struggling with how to make this known to people, and then how to motivate them. So I want to propose a standing ovation to our MDE staff, because this is absolutely stellar to be the model for the-
I know the board knows this, but this is an example of a lot of the things that kind of go a bit under the radar, because it's not quite as newsy, but it does have an unbelievable impact on not only the kids' lives, but on their achievement. So, thanks to our team.
Shannon from, is representing Blue Cross and Blue Shield today, and she also wanted just to share a quick thanks.
I just want to share that we were honored to support the state's breakfast challenge and we're pleased to partner with United Dairy Industry of Michigan to bring grants to Michigan schools. So it has basically highlighted the leadership and commitment to improving health. future years in the state. And, you know, we all know that fighting childhood hunger and bringing access to success are all things we're working on together. So if that collective impact of everyone working together to achieve the same goal has really made a big difference to our schools across the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There are a couple of breakfast success stories that we wanted to share with you today. In Port Huron Central and Holland Woods Middle Schools, challenges were great just a few years ago. Need was high enough that both schools qualified for the Community Eligibility Provision, which is CEP, meaning all students qualified for free meals. Meanwhile, both schools were listed as a priority school by MDE. At the same time, breakfast was served in the cafeteria in both buildings with less than 28% of the students choosing to eat the free breakfast. At Central Middle School, teachers and administrators stood together and requested that breakfast be served in the classroom. Since that time, nearly 80% of the students now choose to eat breakfast at school. The School Food Service Director reports that she's even been able to hire an additional person to manage the increase in demand. The most exciting part of the Central Middle School's success is their increase in test scores. This increase has drawn the attention of those at the Holland Woods Middle School, where administrators and teachers introduced a breakfast kiosk and have seen school participation soar. Calleve and Norman Dixon School District offered breakfast in the cafeteria in school year 9/10, priced for all age groups. From 2010 to spring of 2012, breakfast was still in the classroom, but it was universal-free for the elementary students, and it was priced for secondary school students. Their average ACT score during these years was 17. In the fall of 2012, Norman, Calleve, and Dixon School District began serving breakfast in the classroom and universal for all students, K through 12. Each year since, their average ACT score has risen one point, and as you can see by the chart, their breakfast participation remains high.
So switching gears now to the summer feeding program, we have a short video about the Summer Food Service Program.
I'll make sure and send you guys the video during the mid-months. That way, you guys can see it.
Okay. So for our Summer Food Service Program, Michigan is only one of a few states that has been selected as a 2015-2016 Summer Food Service Program target state by the USDA Food and Nutrition Service. Michigan was chosen due to our strong partnerships that our MDE team has built with local agencies to promote summer meals for children, which mirror national partnerships. This designation as a target state will help to highlight the continued effort that such partnerships will bring to other states across the nation. Our original target area was Detroit and the surrounding area. In an effort to closely align with the goals and strategic vision of Michigan's No Kid Hungry Campaign, MDE will continue to target southeast Michigan, but will also add Flint, Kalamazoo, Grand Rapids, Benton Harbor, and Lansing. We will also target some key rural communities, specifically with those with little or no history of the Summer Food Service Program participation. So in Elkhona, Alpena, Aranac, Mount Morente, Ascota, and Tuscola Counties, we will concentrate resources in order to identify potential partners to assist in growing the program in those communities. And finally, MDE will specifically target Indian Tribal Organizations, or ITOs, and migrant populations in an effort to assure that children have access to the program.
The School Nutrition Programs Unit started the Summer Electronic Benefit Transfer Card, also known as SEBTC, as a pilot in 2011, where we served approximately 2,500 students in the Grand Rapids Public School District. SEBT is a program that provides low-income families with nutritious food for their kids during the summer months when school breakfast and lunch are not available. The SEBTC program uses a bridge card for electronic benefit transfer, similar to women, infant, children, and we know that as WIC. We are now into our fifth year of the pilot, and we will serve over 40,000 students from the following school districts this summer: Detroit, Grand Rapids, and Kentwood Public Schools; the Bay-Aranac Intermediate School District; Clare-Gladwin Regional Education Service District; Midland County Education Service Agency; Tuscola Intermediate School District; Alpena Public Schools; and Houghton Portage Township Public Schools. Governor Snyder approved Michigan's participation in the No Kids Hungry Campaign in partnership with Share Our Strength and the United Way of Southeast Michigan in May of 2012. Share Our Strength is a national nonprofit working to end childhood hunger. And while there has been some work around breakfast and after-school snacks, the majority of the partnerships with No Kid Hungry is the Summer Food Service Program. The initial focus was in southeast Michigan, but other cluster areas have been identified in the state, and many of these mirror the same cluster areas that we're going to be using with our target state implementation.
So our goal for 2015 is to increase our Summer Food Service Program participation by 12%, with a special focus on rural areas, those lower participating counties, and increasing participation in those specific cities. We're proud to have increased our SFSB participation in recent years, including an increase in 323 additional feeding sites and 34 additional sponsors in 2014 alone, which equates to an increase in participation of approximately 10% annually for the last three years. Michigan has also successfully rebranded the SFSB as Meetup, Eatup, and Readup by partnering with First Books in order to encourage reading and continued learning throughout the summer months. We feel that this supports the culture of reading initiative as well as the governor's third grade reading initiative. We're proud to have distributed over 1,400 book bundles in 2014, and we look forward to increasing those numbers in 2015 with an additional $40,000 investment from the USDA to support this initiative. We also have three ways that families can find the summer meals for their children around the state. We provide the SFSB Site Locator Map, which allows families to identify their nearest feeding location, including information about meal types, times, and driving directions. The map can be found at the michigan.gov/meetupreadup website. In partnership with Michigan No Kid Hungry and the United Way for Southeast Michigan, folks can also locate their local feeding sites by dialing 211. Call centers across the state will access that site locator map and help the caller with their closest feeding location. And additionally, Michigan No Kid Hungry is again sponsoring the text message resource. You can text "FOOD" to 877-877. It will respond with the address of where you're at. You provide the address, and it will give you the closest feeding locations, times, and meal types at those locations. We would love it if you would join us for a park party or a celebration or a kickoff event this summer. In fact, there will be five Miranda Park Parties on the west side of the state. There will be kickoffs in both Detroit and Oakland County. And on July 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be a kickoff event right here in Lansing at the Boys and Girls Club, where we will be giving away books to participating children as a component of our Meetup, Eatup, and Readup campaign.
A couple of successes in summer feeding that we've seen through our state. In 2014, you know, Diane mentioned earlier the huge increase in sites and sponsors that we have going into this year, which is huge in terms of access, whether in rural or urban areas of our state. Last year, our Summer Food Service Program served over 3.7 million meals during the summer months, which was an 11% increase from the year before. So trying to add another 12% increase during the summer is huge, but with those increase in access points, we're confident we can do it. Water Street Public Schools is a great example of a partnership where the district was one of 26 new sponsors for the current year. And since they're an open site, they've reached out to their ITO, their intertribal organization, will be providing meals to those children as well as busing students from the tribal organization to the Water Street site for food. Another cool one, and we've seen this in other states, where we, you know, instead of bringing students and families to the food, you bring the food to where they're at. In South Haven, the public schools are going to be featuring a South Haven Farm Bus. They retrofitted a school bus that will feature books as well as meals for children in their rural areas. In addition, they partnered with local health clinics to provide vaccines to children on their route. So I think two years ago, I was down in Detroit where Gleaners had done something very similar where, like, Clockwork, you know, they'll have a seven or eight-stop route during a two- or three-hour window for lunch specifically, and they'll go, they'll set up, they'll feed the kids at either, you know, church or community organization site, and then they'll move on to their next one. So again, how do we make it easy for students and families to access these programs?
And in addition to the mobile feeding, Gleaners Community Food Bank also provides children with many activities at their sites to keep the children engaged throughout the summer months. And they will use two youth ambassadors to work with children at the sites, and they will provide assistance with fitness, yoga, and nutrition education. Finally, MDE is proud to have a letter sent to both Superintendent Flanagan and Governor Schneider from USDA Secretary Vilsack, which stated Michigan has been doing great work with partners supporting the Summer Food Service Program. In addition, the governor signed a proclamation identifying the week of June 15 as Meetup and Eatup Summer Food Service Week.
Thank you, Board, for the time and for your continued support. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
This is meant just as a presentation. I mean, this is basic Maslow stuff. And I think sometimes when we get into the reforms that are mostly largely well-intentioned, don't get at some of the base issues. And, I mean, I probably ad nauseam have brought up at times, but I was never hungry, but probably half of my class in Brooklyn always was. My parents, even though we had eight kids, would bring folks over because they just knew they didn't have any food. And then programs were starting about then. But I think if we're, you know, in my article in Bridge, I thought, "I'm at the end here, and I didn't want it to look like an excuse that poverty is an excuse," because it isn't. There are districts and schools with high poverty rates that are doing very well. Many of those are because they've embraced these programs. But having said that, you know, just on my watch here, poverty's gone up 35% for kids in our schools. It's at 20... It's one in four kids are in poverty. In Finland, it's 5% or less. We're not clear on that. We use the higher one, but it's just, we're up against the wall in so many ways. And I think we, so we try to fix these things sometimes up here when what's basically going on is, "I don't even get what you're trying to do. I'm hungry," or, "I don't get how this is actually going to make a difference in my life" and some of these fundamental things. So that's a lot of the work that I can't overemphasize. And not only the board hears this regularly and knows this, by the way, you see it, but also for Brian, that so much of the work that goes on in these floors here in the building is that, what I'm calling unsexy, I don't mean that as a derogatory, but doesn't get quite the play and just actually can continue to make a difference. So really appreciate your efforts. And the rest of your team, would you stand up too? I know you're in the back of the room here. We appreciate your efforts. Please, give us a... So we're good? Thanks, guys. Thanks so much.
And you'll give us those dates of the...
I also have a parting gift, calendars from the School Nutrition Association of Michigan, pictures from feeding sites throughout our state, and I wanted to share a copy with everybody.
Thanks, Kyle. Next item is the discussion regarding criteria for grant program. Is there any... Any discussion on the criteria for grant program? Okay, then, why don't we recess for lunch and come back earlier? Does that sound okay? Because public participation, they won't be back.
Do you want to do a couple things, so I can do my report?
If you'd like to. Okay. Well, why don't we, for John's suggestion, that let's just go into the regular meeting. We'll do some of that. Good morning, still. The time is now 9:46, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of June 9 is called to order. We'll hold on public participation, obviously. I know new employees aren't going to be here until then, but let's go right to approval of minutes. A true approval of minutes of the Regent Committee, the whole meeting of May 12. Is there a motion? Moved by... Merz will figure that out. I think it was John, and I think it was supported by...
Michelle.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you. Approval of Record of Special Meeting, May 13, 2015. Motion, please.
Don't move.
It's moved by Lupe. Support reported by John. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Approval of Record of State Board of Ed Retreat of May 19. Motion, please.
Support.
I mean, motion.
Moved by Eileen.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you. And John, if you wanted to...
We've got people here. And we are in this transition, and it's a nice transition, bittersweet, but I really want to thank everybody for working together on this transition as we move ahead and if we work together. And also, I wanted to note, you know, there's a bigger celebration than today for Mike coming up on the 24th, Thursday. At the, it's at the Country Club of East Lansing, right? 25th, 25th. Is that right? So I hope everybody can come.
University Club.
5:30? Do we have that right? Bye. All right. I'm testing. I'm making sure everybody's on top of this. Good to see they are. So that'll be wonderful. I'm sure you gave more. So we did have a good retreat, both looking at where we are, what we've got moving, and where we're going in the future. I mean, before, I just mentioned a couple of things of where we're going in the future. In the immediate short term, you know, we do have things on the table, some of which we're going to talk about this afternoon, which I would characterize as things where we need to continue to do our best to encourage the legislature and in most cases, help the governor get the best possible outcomes in terms of some important legislation and policy pieces that are in the immediate future. We'll talk about the third grade reading, the task force report, and hopefully, I think there's some very encouraging framing of how we can be effective in third grade reading that I hope we'll support. You know, the teacher evaluation system, we need to have a quality teacher evaluation system get done. And I always want to remind us all, and some of you may have seen Deb Ball's comments in Bridge and other things. A few years ago, we did this very important but difficult thing, which is we made tenure reform, as it's called, which is you've got to keep earning your stripes, and to keep your ticket, you have to be evaluated. And the key to tenure reform is an evaluation that helps teachers improve their game, that is supportive of their practice, and that they feel is good and helps them, not punish them. And with the help of the commission... And with the help of the commission that the governor appointed, we got some great recommendations, and we had some really good bipartisan legislation that was basically implementing those recommendations to make sure there's quality, supportive teacher evaluation everywhere in the state. And it is the key to doing tenure reform right. And it's unfortunate that we, and we could be a national leader. I mean, we had the opportunity to be a national leader in this important work of helping improve quality of teaching. And I'm afraid we've got legislation that goes back to square one, which is good, bad, and indifferent evaluations, depending on where you are, which is very damaging to teachers and damaging to their effectiveness of quality. So we have to do better. I hope we will continue to work to see if we can encourage the strongest possible teacher evaluation bill to get passed that's supportive and effective, because it's so important to talk about. So, we've got to help the governor's plan for Detroit be as effective as possible, and I'm glad he's taking on some good ideas, and the commission has some good ideas. We'll talk about the coalition battle a little more tonight, and have the turnaround strategy be effective, which we do need to have. And that's important. And the budget, you know, good news, I think the budget compromise has more good stuff than bad stuff in terms of support for at-risk and more closer to the governor's proposals than other proposals, so we need to continue to encourage that and have that spending plan be as effective as possible. And put our money where it's going to be most effective to improve achievement, which is the main thing that we care about. As we look ahead, you know, we are going to be, with Brian's coming on board, and as we did at the retreat, look at the set of policy priorities for us and our superintendent, begin to place those and some potential additional policy priorities in front of us in terms of our game plan for the next few years. We're going to, I think it's been our next couple meetings, August and September, hearing from everyone, the field and education policy experts, of what they think the five things should be for our policy priorities, and use that process to help us with our strategic direction for the next couple of years, hopefully that we can reinforce the most effective policy agendas for the state and work well with the governor legislature and the field to help make as much of it happen as we can. Thank you. That's my report.
Normally, we kick mine in, it's a tad longer than usual, and I need some technology, so I think I'll defer, if I may. It was planned for the afternoon, and maybe we come back early. What we're just suggesting is a time to...
About 12:45?
12:45? We'll restart, and maybe we'll make sure our new employees are here, I think they would be anyway, but it's a little ahead, and then we'll immediately start if there's some public participation folks. We always have a caveat on here that it isn't necessarily one, it's whenever the board reconvenes, but on the other hand, some people may be assuming it's one, so we'll honor that. And, great. See you at 12:45. And Brian, please join us. We'd love to have you back there.